Hello, everybody. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners Help for the Purpose Transaction in the General Township Business of the Township. Today's date is March 8th, 2023. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building and also being offered on a live streaming feature. This meeting will also be made available on the Township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely during the meeting, but instructions for submitting public comment in advance of tonight's meeting were provided as part of the posted agenda. Mr. Taylor, if you could summarize, I believe we received one public comment?
That's correct, Mr. Lee. We received one public comment was from an individual who resides in Orland. They commented on Commissioner Graham's resignation, which you'll announce later on, as well as one active litigation matter.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. At this time, please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection to honor the service, men and women who place themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball. This time I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. It's written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote. Or you know, five zero votes. Excuse me. Thank you. Okay, this evening, we have five commissioners with us. Commissioner Standish was not able to be here this evening, and as Mr. Taylor noted, and I'll make a further comment in a few minutes, Commissioner Graham has resigned his position as Commissioner. And do we have any former? I didn't see any former commissioners. Okay. I missed you. I'll come back. Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session as part of its March 6, 2023 workshop meeting to discuss one personnel matter and two matters of litigation. On March 6, 2023, the board received an email from Eddie Graham announcing that he's resigned his position as Ward 7 Commissioner effective immediately. In accordance with Section 530 of the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code, vacancies shall not be created until the date that a resignation is formally accepted by a majority vote of a quorum of the Board of Commissioners at a public meeting. Board of Commissioners must accept the resignation no later than forty-eight days, excuse me, forty-five days after it has been tendered. Once accepted by a majority vote, the board has thirty days to fill the vacancy. In order to provide sufficient time for the board to fill the anticipated vacancy created by Mr. Graham's resignation is the intention of the Board of Commissioners to conduct a vote on Mr. Graham's resignation at its April 12, 2023 business meeting to appoint a replacement at its May 10, 2023 business meeting. The individual who was appointed to fill the vacancy will serve until the first Monday in January 2023, unless elected to serve as Commissioner at the November 2023 municipal election.
The first number should be twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Yes, January 24. Thank you. Let's we go back in time. Any registered elector who has continuously resided in Ward 7 of Springfield Township for at least one year is eligible to serve as Commissioner. Residents meeting the eligibility requirements are encouraged to submit a letter of interest and resume to the attention of Michael Taylor, Township Manager, 1510 Paper Mill Road, Windmore, as soon as possible, but no later than April 7, 2023. This time, I would like to invite our Chief of Police, Michael Pitco, who is here to issue unit citations, commendations of merit, and highway safety awards to honor multiple police officers in our department for their commendable actions that have demonstrated significant initiative, intelligence, intelligence or ability in the line of duty over the past several years. Thank you, Chief Pitco, for being with us this evening.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's definitely a pleasure to preside over this long overdue commendation ceremony to congratulate, honor a number of officers this evening for meritorious service during the past year. As most of you realize, policing has been very challenging over the past few years with COVID-19, and it's affected our staffing level at times. There's no such thing as working remotely in law enforcement. In addition, a number of police departments in Montgomery County have experienced increases in crime over the last couple of years. And unfortunately, there have been been more crimes committed with firearms in Montgomery County. And as you're going to hear this evening, our officers have encountered a number of these individuals in Springfield Township. I'm certain the officers here tonight agree with me that being a police officer remains one of the most noble professions one can have. It's my honor to lead and serve with my fellow officers who have definitely a difficult job lately and continue to honor their oath of office and serve our township, which remains a community, a great community, to live, raise a family, and work. I'd like to recognize Lieutenant Rebecca Mersky to my left here for her input on revising our commendations policy, working on that, and I'll describe some of the awards coming up here. And while we're recognizing the twelve officers this evening in the room, please give a round of applause to all of our men and women who serve our community along with their families that are here tonight, and we thank them for their service. So this evening, we're going to issue basically three types of commendations. One is a commendatory letter or a letter of commendation. And with that one, that's for an arrest of any public service which is exceptional and beyond the requirements of routine duty. And then the, another one is a unit citation, a lot of good teamwork on that, exceptional police service for the outstanding accomplishment as a result of teamwork rather than that of the individuals. And commendation of merit is for an act of intelligent and valuable police service, demonstrating faithfulness and perseverance, including an especially important arrest accomplished through highly intelligent police performance. Now, we, we have certificates for the officers this evening. As also part of their awards or commendations, they will have commendation bars to be worn on their uniforms. But unfortunately, there's some supply chain issues. So go figure, right? So we haven't received those yet, but we expect them to arrive in the very near future. So we're going to go backwards in time. This is for the year 2022. And just so everybody knows, we plan to do this angrily. So we, we, we like to get input from the supervisors in the department. In fact, a police officer doesn't even have to be a supervisor and put in a request for meritorious service by one of our officers. So we'll go back in time to February 2, 2020. So we'll call up Officer Wiley, who actually receives a number of accomplishments, right? Let me reach about Officer Wiley's. Get this open here. Okay, on Tuesday, February 2, 2022, at 1:50 PM, Officer Wiley observed a silver Chevrolet Cavalier displaying an expired temporary Texas registration traveling southbound 800 block of Bethland Pike. The vehicle was driving in an active work zone at an unsafe speed while making unsafe lane changes. The vehicle stopped in the 8800 block of Stanton Avenue located up in Windmore. Officer Wiley introduced himself and asked the driver to produce his license, registration, and proof of insurance. Officer Wiley could smell the odor of burnt marijuana, and it was noted that the driver's hands and leg were shaking. The driver was asked to step out of the vehicle so that the standardized field sobriety testing could be administered. And based on Officer Wiley's training and observations, it was believed that the driver was under the influence of narcotics, and therefore he was placed under arrest. The driver did consent to a blood test while not consenting to a search of the vehicle. So a search warrant was drafted by Officer Wiley and submitted to Magisterial District Judge, which was approved, and the resultant lawful search yielded a loaded 25 caliber firearm under the driver's seat. Since your driver was a convicted felon, he was prohibited from possessing a firearm and therefore unable to obtain a concealed carry license. As a result of Officer Wiley's diligent patrol, the male was charged with felony offenses for the firearm in addition to the DUI traffic offenses. Your actions are in the highest tradition of the Springfield Township Police Department. Here's our official camera. Okay, next up, we have a number of officers here. This is April 16. We have Sergeant Bialato, Officer Towser, Officer Seltzer, and Detective Craig. On Saturday, April 16, 2022, at 4:49 PM, the Cheltenham Township Police Department responded to a driveway shooting in the area of 2471 West Cheltenham Avenue. The suspect vehicle is reported to be a black Ford Taurus occupied by four males armed, wearing dark clothing, last seen traveling northbound Route 309. Updated information reported that the males fled from the car in the unit block of Evergreen Avenue located in the windcoat section of Cheltenham Township. Sergeant Bialato observed three suspects in the area of Limekill Pike and Greenwood Avenue. All three were visibly sweating and nervous. Officer Seltzer assisted Sergeant Bialato with detaining, handcuffing, and searching the males. A backpack worn by a male contained a firearm determined to be stolen, and the males were turned over to Cheltenham Township Police. Officer Towser was directed to respond to Evergreen Avenue to guard the vehicle. Detective Craig responded to assist at multiple crime scenes. I think there were about three crime scenes in this case. And Detective Craig was processing those areas and assisting the Cheltenham Township Police Detectives. Officers began searching the area for discarded firearms, and a total of four firearms were located. All the evidence contained or connected to the vehicle, rather, and occupants were photographed Detective Craig turn over to Cheltenham Township Police, where again, there was assistance to their detective division. As a result of response of our Springfield Township Police Officers, those dangerous individuals were safely taken into custody, and your actions again are in the highest tradition of the Springfield Township Police Department. All right, next on deck is Officer Wiley again. This is another firearm case. A little more excitement on this one. On Sunday, May 1, 2022, 1:21 AM, Y1 Patrol in the 1800 block of Bethland Pike, Officer Wiley observed a black SUV enter the Flower Town Shopping Center where a "do not enter" sign had to be posted. The vehicle stopped for several minutes, and when Officer Wiley investigated further, he decided to walk up to the vehicle, and he could see three occupants, and again, the smell of burnt marijuana. The rear seat passenger was seen pulling a black object from his waistband and putting it under his left leg. Additional officers were called in to assist the officer from Springfield Township and White Marsh Township. I think there was a Cheltenham Township officer also responded. The three individuals were detained, and the black object was determined to be a firearm. The driver did give consent to search the vehicle, and a quantity of narcotics and paraphernalia were also seized. The three suspects were arrested and taken into custody. One male was charged with carrying a firearm without a license to carry. That's a felony, and the other two males were charged with narcotics and drug paraphernalia charges. Officer Wiley's actions again in a potentially volatile situation are in the highest tradition of the Springfield Township Police Department. Now we have Officer Towser. Wait, Officer Wiley coming back. And Sergeant Hart. On Tuesday, July 5, 2022, at about 12:30 PM, Officer Wiley observed a white Chevrolet Sonic traveling northbound on Bethland Pike of Wissaken Avenue. And he believed that this was the same suspect, the vehicle related to a number of thefts from purses and pickpocket offenses at local grocery stores. The suspect vehicle parked at Rita's Water Ice on Bethland Pike, and the male was seen walking toward the acting market. Officer Towser watched the male enter the acting market, and Officer Wiley saw through the window of the vehicle that there was a gray bucket type style hat similar to the hat worn in other theft cases. And about ten minutes later, Officer Towser saw the male leaving the acting market. And unfortunately, he saw the officer, so he decided to run toward the Flower Town Swim Club parking lot. Sergeant Hart happened to be nearby and spotted this male hiding behind a car, and then he decided to try to flee from Sergeant Hart. And he was unsuccessful. Sergeant Hart apprehended the male. He was identified, and there were outstanding warrants. The male was charged with multiple counts of access device fraud, theft by unlawful taking and receiving stolen property, all felonies in third degree. Because of your alert patrol and perseverance, I may comment about that, that some of you folks remember the old Barney Miller show, and I'm showing my age here. Anybody remember that? So I'd come into the police station, and it looked like an episode of Barney Miller, the old NYPD detective office with Hal Linden. Because I think it was mainly Officer Towser here had flyers and pictures of the suspect car, and they were posted all over the building. So it was a lot of perseverance here by Matt and any other officers. And again, this person was taken into custody. He was preying on the unsuspecting shoppers in Flower Town. I'm sure a lot of other areas. And again, all your actions are in the highest tradition of the Springfield Township Police Department. Picture time.
Did you get that, Brendan?
I didn't.
Yeah, you got it.
All right, next up is Detective Craig. Well, by himself on this one. Saturday, September 24, 2022, officers were dispatched for a burglar alarm activation at the Founding Fathers Outfitters 9280 Rich Pike located in the Lafayette Hill section of Springfield Township, and determined that the firearm's business had been burglarized by five individuals who would first entry through the front door and then decide to steal 26 handguns from a display case. One of the handguns was used in an attempted robbery in West Philadelphia two days later, September 26. And the sixteen-year-old male that had that handgun was actually shot by his intended victim, who was lawfully carrying a weapon. Subsequent to the burglary, there were additional gun store burglaries in November in New Britain and Warwick Townships, Bucks County, and also an attempted burglary in Hattborough in Montgomery County. Through the collaboration with detectives in those municipalities, the Philadelphia Police Department, Montgomery County Detective Bureau, Bucks County Detectives, Philadelphia Field Division of the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives, FBI, Office of the Attorney General, and the Delaware State Police. Through countless hours of investigation with two task force meetings arranged by Detective Craig, a lawman's expertise in analyzing cellphone data and social media, suspects were identified. In all, taking into account all the gunshots, ninety-three firearms were stolen, and as of January 25th, anyway, only thirty-three of those ninety-three have been recovered. Two adults and eleven juveniles were charged with numerous felony offenses, including corrupt organizations, conspiracy, and firearms trafficking. A little bit more about Detective Craig. He has excelled in some of the training that we've sent him to Alabama for four weeks of digital forensic training with the, with mobile cellphone units, and most recently, an additional week down the same, the SOE down in Alabama with digital video recorders. So we got about five extra weeks, and that doesn't even count even some of the other training that he's online trained, that he's actually done on his own. So he's got quite a bit of expertise for that. And again, excellent work by all our partners in law enforcement against these brazen criminals, helps us actually to make our communities a little bit safer. So your actions are again, are in the highest tradition of the Springfield Township Police Department, and we thank you. Now we got six officers coming up here for an incident happened on October 2. That's Sergeant Wilbur, Corporal Calhoun, Officer Sweeney, who cannot be here tonight. Officer Lopez, Officer Perrini, and Officer Gross. This will be the most recent one recognized. Sunday, October 2, 2022, 12:29 AM, officers Perrini and Gross, and by the way, Officer Perrini is a transplant, a transplant out of the Philadelphia Police Department, 35th District. He was hired back in September, and he was riding with his FTO, Officer Gross. Well, they attempted to stop a blue Jeep Liberty on Paper Mill Road near Montgomery Avenue because a registration was listed to a Chevrolet instead. The vehicle fled at a high rate of speed and turned right on the Cheltenham Avenue, then it turned right on the Walgreens Avenue. It was heading into Windmore. Corporal Calhoun happened to be working in a landmark car that evening and observed at some point the vehicle on Ardmore Avenue. A short time later, Calhoun locates the unoccupied car now parked in the 7800 block of Ardmore Avenue. And when he looks inside of the Jeep, he sees a handgun ammunition in a cup located on the rear seat and alerts his fellow officers that are working that evening. And we're fortunate that night because we had six officers with new Officer Perrini. It's not often that we have a full complement out there. The Jeep was found to have been reported stolen in Dorsetown earlier in the night. Sergeant Wilbur happened to see the two males exiting the rear yard of a home in the 600 block of Mermaid Lane and get into a vehicle. Later found out it's one of those Uber pickup vehicles going west on Mermaid Lane. The officers performed a felony car stop, and the males decide to exit the car. Now, one of them stayed with the car, but the other one, while kind of a moving to his waistband and whatnot, he ends up fleeing on foot. There's a rather brief foot chase, and he's taken into custody. So both of these individuals were taken into custody. They're both juveniles, and they're both carrying firearms with extended magazines. One of the firearms was reported stolen out of Richmond, Virginia, and the other firearm was, had an obliterated serial number on it. Both juveniles were charged with multiple felonies for the weapons that stolen vehicle charges transported to Montgomery County Youth Center. The police department again was forced to have good manpower that evening, and they displayed excellent teamwork, and fortunately, none of our officers were injured as a result of the actions of these two individuals. Again, your actions are in the highest tradition of the Springfield Township Police Department. Thank you. Last but not least, I don't think we have this award in our former awards policy, but this is the so-called Highway Safety Award. So naturally, that'll be Officer Wiley at this time. So again, we'll do this on an angle basis. So a little bit, a little bit about the Highway Safety Award. It's going to be annually a word to the officer who was nominated by the sergeants subsequent to review of the officer's activity for the year to include DUI arrests, hazardous moving violation citations, overall citations, warnings issued, and even parking violation enforcement. Consideration for this award is also given for attendance in crash training to include basic on-scene crash investigation, advanced crash investigation, and reconstruction investigation. And Officer Wiley will be attending two weeks of reconstruction training coming up this summer. I know I had that many years ago. I know you better be good at math and all kinds of formulas for that. Meanwhile, our other crash officer, Officer Gross, has on-scene accident investigation that has been registered to attend advanced crash investigation coming up also as we move in a couple of months. So the 2022 Highway Safety Award goes to Officer Wiley. All right. Okay, thanks. Thanks, everybody, for attending. We really appreciate the support.
Chief, maybe we could do a picture up here with all the award winners?
Absolutely.
Any commissioners?
Jim and I can leave if you guys want to jump in there.
Guys, we're staying up, I think. We going as down or up?
Just work for you guys or? Random, did your android fit this in here?
Do you have other items? All right, we're all back, okay? At this time, the board is now open to comments. Or questions from the public, the board draws particular attention to those items listed. On the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments once going to be accepted, however, official action on those issues. Listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, that would be the appropriate time. Okay, looks like no public comments, we will now uh go into our committee reports. And I will kick that off. First thing this evening is your uh regarding a request for fireworks to display Sandy Run Country Club. I moved that the Board of Commissioners wave section thirty-three oh three. That one. Twelve of the Springfield Township Fire Prevention Code in order. That the Sandy Run Country Club may conduct a professional fireworks display on Saturday evening, September sixteenth. Twenty twenty-three at approximately seven PM. As part of the club's one-hundred-year anniversary celebration. The approval is conditioned upon the following. The one, the pyrotechnical firm and the Sandy Run Country Club at Springfield Township as an additional assured. One, their certificates of insurance for the event. Two, the pyrotechnical firm and the Sandy Run Country Club. Shall work closely with the Springfield Township Fire Marshal. And the Orland Fire Company to help prevent. An accident and to create a plan of action in the event that an accident does occur during the activity. And three, the pyrotechnical. Firm or Sandy Run Country Club shall provide notice of the fireworks display to all property owners. Joining the country club property prior to September sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, that is my motion.
Second.
You have a second, any questions or comments?
A quick comment, um just as uh reiterated on Monday. Well, my dogs uh are never grateful for the fireworks display, I am very pleased to support uh Sandy Ron in the celebration of their hundredth anniversary. They have been tremendous partners to the township. Uh over the years, but specifically over the last several years as we've worked um towards. Uh stormwater mitigation efforts um on the course that will hopefully alleviate um. Specifically, some of the area around Burton Road, uh but they have been great, great partners with the township, so. Delighted to support their in their uh celebration of the centennial.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay? Please record a five zero vote. I would like to make an additional announcement. As I'm mixing up my paperwork. Excuse me. I would like to make a another announcement. I want to acknowledge the. Actions of the men and women volunteers of the Flower Town, Orland, and Winmore Fire Companies responded to a significant house fire. In the five hundred block of Kingston Road in Orland in the early morning hours of March sixth, twenty twenty-three. Fire call was received by nine-one-one operators at two oh three AM. The first volunteer, the Orland Fire Company was unseen within six minutes. Using large diameter hose, fire personnel were able to knock down the bulk of the fire by two thirty-six AM. And successfully prevented it from spreading to adjacent structures. Fortunately, no one was in the resident. No one in the residence was home at the time of the fire, except for the family dog, and no injuries were sustained by fire personnel. Fire companies were assisted by members of the Springfield Township Police Department. Were first to arrive on scene and immediately began evacuating the occupants. Of neighboring dwellings before identifying the nearest fire hydrants for the arriving fire apparatus. Fire response is an excellent example of emergency management planning and teamwork among the police, fire. And emergency medical personnel who protect and serve the township every day. And on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I would like to thank them for their efforts. And that concludes my report, and we will move on to. Mr. Standish is not with us this evening, um so. So he's doing his report, let's go to the Chairman of the Environmental Resource Committee, Peter Wilson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I'm reporting on the recycling tonight. And I'm pleased to announce that during the month of February twenty twenty-three, Springfield Township residents recycle. Hundred and thirty-nine ton, hundred and thirty-nine tons of materials with a household participation rate. Of seventy-point-two percent. The net costs for the month were twenty-seven thousand and fifty-one dollars. Another announcement is that uh. The Board of Commissioners wants to remind residents. That plastic bags are not suitable for recycling as part of the township's curbside recycling collection program. Uh in addition, plastic bags should not be used. Uh would not be, should not be placed in receptacles. Uh out for collection by township crews. Plastic bags slow the sorting process. Of material recovery, material recovery facilities, which increases the processing costs paid by the township. Instead, residents are encouraged to recycle their plastic bags. Uh at drop-off locations presently found. Uh at our local Acme and Giant supermarkets. And to avoid placing that these materials for collection uh using plastic uh hand liners. Additionally, I have environmental report. Commission report. We are pleased to announce that on Saturday, May the thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. The Springfield Township Environmental Advisory Commission. Will be conducting their second annual plant sale at the Free Library of Springfield Township. All plants will be offered for sale at cost. In addition, in order to prepare and educate. The Springfield Township community about native plants, the Environmental Advisory Commission will be conducting. A native plant education workshop. Uh on Thursday, March thirtieth. At the Free Library of Springfield. I believe it's about seven o'clock. The township will highlight the importance of incorporating plants that are native to southeastern Pennsylvania. In their yards and gardens. And finally, as part of the April tenth workshop meeting. Uh the board will be receiving a presentation. From representatives of the Environmental Advisory Commission. Regarding their request for a limited number of households in the community to observe no mo may. No mo may is an effort that discourages traditional lawn maintenance practices. In order to create habitat and foliage for bees and other early season pollinators. That concludes my reports.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson, we'll go to the Chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two items this evening, first is the Black Horse Inn. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the township manager to execute a listing agreement. With Dan Helwig Incorporated to market and secure tenants. For two office suites at the Black Horse Inn, fourteen thirty-two Bethlehem Pike Flower Town. Pursuant to the terms of the proposed agreement, Dan Hellig Reilders shall serve. As the township's broker and agent. And shall receive compensation during the term of the agreement in an amount equal to one month's rent per unit. The term of the agreement shall expire July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, that is my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell, so it's your second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay? Please record a five zero vote.
Next item is resolution number fifteen ninety-eight, the DC NR. C two P two grant. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution number one five ninety, authorizing an application to the Pennsylvania Department of. Creation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnership Program. For the acquisition of two point seven five nine acres of open space located at. Three eighty-four two Halls Lane. In phase two of the Walnut Avenue Trail Project, the grant requests. In the amount of five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the open space acquisition. And one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the trail project, that is my motion.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Please record a five zero vote.
That concludes my report for this evening's.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell, we will move on to the Chairman of the Administrative Fiscal Affairs and Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thanks, Mr. President, um first I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the February check reconciliation in the amount of six hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. And the March bill listing in the amount. Of eight hundred and two thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. And that's my motion.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Please record a five zero vote.
All right, next, um the Springfield Township zoning hearing board will meet on Monday, March twenty-seventh. At seven PM in this uh township building. Where they will hear the following applications. Uh the first is regarding the property located at uh. Six twenty-two East Grabors Lane. Give me one second, I apologize for that. So that property. Okay. Where the applicant has filed an appeal to the zoning uh board pertaining to the violation letter that was sent. To them dated January thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. The violation letter is for the operation of a professional home office. Or no impact home-based business in violation of section one one four two one. And section one one four dash one three nine point two of the Springfield Township zoning ordinance. The applicant contests that there is no office or business activity conducted at the property. And that property is zoned within the A residential district of Ward number two of Springfield Township. Regarding that, respect to that case, I moved that the Board of Commissioners authorize the Office of the Township Solicitor. To attend. The March twenty-seventh meeting. Of the zoning hearing board and any subsequent meetings involving the subject property in order to support and defend the determination. Of the Springfield Township zoning officer that a business or businesses are being operated from the subject location in violation of sections one one four dash two one. And one one four dash one three nine point two of the Springfield Township Code, and that's my motion.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Please record a five zero vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and then there will be two more applications that will be heard that evening on Monday, March twenty-seventh. Uh the first, uh the the second application is to be heard from the Sisters of Saint Joseph. Uh owners of the property located at one twenty West West Hickin Ave in Flower Town. That applicant is seeking a um variance from Springfield Township. Requesting the approval to construct the proposed addition to the campus. Without adding the required additional parking stalls or installing additional landscaping within the existing parking lots. The additions are proposed to improve the existing facilities on the campus. Of St. Genevieve's and will not increase student enrollment. That property is zoned within the institutional district of Ward one of Springfield Township. And finally, the application of Dana and Newcomb Baker. Owners of the property located at Seventy North College Avenue in Flower Town. Those app, those applicants are requesting a variance. Seeking to uh install an eighty foot, eighty square foot garden shed within the rear yard that will be as close. As two feet from the side and rear property lines. Shed is required to be a minimum of seven feet from the side and rear property lines. And that property is owned within the C residential district of Ward one of Springfield Township. Again, those three applications will be heard on Monday, March twenty-seventh at seven PM in this building. Finally, uh resolution number fifteen ninety-nine. The disposition of records in compliance with Pennsylvania Act four two eight. Of nineteen sixty-eight. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution number fifteen ninety-nine. A resolution authorizing disposition of township records. As set forth in a list of files and records. Attached to resolution number one five nine nine totaling approximately thirty boxes. That's my motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Um we had a a list of those records in our book, I presume that's online as well?
It can be, if you want me to put it up there.
Yeah, I think it's probably good, I mean, just it's just a benign list of.
Time cards, personnel records, bank statements, things of that nature that are.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Please record a five zero vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb, we will go to the Chairman of the Parks and Recreational Resource Committee, Commissioner Ratzavong, who will also cover Commissioner Standish's.
Great, I have one motion on behalf of Commissioner Standish and Chair of the Community Development Committee and two announcements to make, I will start with Commissioner Standish's. Report uh on or about, this is regarding land development at nine oh two Pleasant Avenue. On or about November fourth, twenty twenty-two, Patrick Deacon, owner of the property located at nine oh two Pleasant Avenue in Winmore filed a subdivision land development application with Springfield Township seeking preliminary approval. To subdivide the subject property in order to create four separate parcels. Upon which three new single-family dwellings are to be constructed. The ninety-day land development review period imposed by the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code is currently scheduled to expire on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And the applicant has submitted a letter granting an extension of time. To the Board of Commissioners to take formal action on the plan, therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners accept a letter from Patrick J. Deacon. Receive February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, extending the ninety-day subdivision land development plan review period up to and including Friday, May twelfth, twenty twenty-three. The extension of time will provide the applicant the opportunity to revise their land development plans to be in compliance with the Springfield Township Code. That is my motion.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Please record a five zero vote.
All right, uh first of two announcements. Uh first, uh actually, I'm going to do this reverse order, the trail plan meeting, uh there's going to be a trail plan meeting on Monday, March thirteenth. Twenty twenty-three, this upcoming Monday at seven PM. Township's going to be hosting a public meeting in the township building regarding trails in Springfield Township, including a presentation on a draft trail plan. Attendees will learn about different types of trails, possible amenities, the benefits of having a trail network in our community. And how our community wants to use those trails. The presentation will be followed by an opportunity for attendees to provide feedback on proposed trail segments. All residents are invited to attend the meeting on March thirteenth, they've been doing an excellent job. Uh our first uh trail meeting was very lively, hope to see you out there. Second announcement. Uh this is actually a repeat announcement, uh we have been seeking. Uh at the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Uh we have been seeking a non-voting student representative to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation. And a member of the Recreation Center Advisory Committees, technically two spots. The purpose of adding a student representative to the committees is to offer a youth perspective to new and existing programs and recreational needs. to new and existing programs and recreational needs. Interested candidates must only be a resident of Springfield Township, shall be enrolled as a sophomore, junior, or senior, regardless of the secondary school's location. They don't have to be schools located in Springfield Township, so long as you're a resident, sophomore, junior, or senior. Candidates shall send a letter of attention to the, a letter of interest to the attention of Mr. Michael Taylor, Township Manager, 1510 Paper Mill Road, Windmore, PA, or via email, mtaylor@springfieldmonco.org. And that is my second announcement. I would just add while I'm here that we had our first meeting of the Recreation Center Advisory Committee where we had about 25 attendees. It was great. Really appreciate everyone coming out. Look forward to those meetings. Both Park and Rec and Rec Center meetings are the first week of the month. I serve on both of those committees, so I hope to see you out there. Really looking forward to seeing the students' work, but again, want to recognize the great work of the Rec Center Advisory Committee's first meeting. I think we have a great crew there. Before I conclude my report, I just want to express the sadness to hear of the news of the loss of Commissioner Graham, who has at all turning points been an excellent colleague, mentor, and public leader. And, you know, while I wish he hadn't gone this route, I appreciate why he had to, and I just wanted to express the sadness for the loss. So appreciate, appreciate all of his hard work and look forward to the applicants coming forward. That concludes my report.
Mr. President, may I comment on that?
Yes, sir.
Comment. I also was very saddened to hear that Commissioner Graham was resigning. I know he's been under a lot of, a lot of pressure, especially with regard to the actions of the, on the police matter. He's been a dedicated public servant, and he has been, you know, solidly also focused on constituent services for his, for his term in office, and he will be missed.
And that concluded my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ratzavong, and well said. Thank you for sharing that. The board is once again open to receiving public comment. If you'd like to make a public comment, come on up, state your name and address into the microphone. Okay, here we none. I would. Oh, there we go.
Mary Ellen Reeve, Station Avenue. First, I'd like to say to Commissioner Ratzavong, happy International Women's Day as our only serving female commissioner. Special thank you for that. And just another question, is there an opportunity to either see or reread the resignation of Commissioner Graham to get a little more insight into exactly, you know, they've expressed their sadness in him leaving, just to find out really what happened as a resident of Ward Seven? That is something I'd be interested in knowing. I understand the, what has been going on, but just a little more specifics.
Sure, I mean, one, he's your commissioner, you could reach out to him directly and ask that he shares that. That's the first path that I would, that I would offer.
So you can't provide that to me, or?
I mean, if it's a, if it's a specific email you're looking for, which is how it was submitted, you could do a write-to-no request.
Okay.
But I would, I would again strongly suggest reaching out directly. As far as I know, he's not secretive about.
So I feel a little weird doing it now that he's resigned. I don't really feel comfortable with that. I don't want to be infringing on his personal space, so I'll just go a more formal request if you're not able to read it tonight. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, having no other public comment, I would accept a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a five zero vote, and we are concluded.